Almost at the appointed hour here. Well, good evening. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Meeting for Monday, October 18, 2021. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Councilmember Bell, here. Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Moss.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Whelan.
Present.
And Mayor Anderson has been excused. You have a quorum.
Well, thank you very much. We will dispense with the Pledge of Allegiance today, since we don't have a flag that necessarily stand and pledge our allegiance to, but let's turn to proclamations and presentations. And first, we will have a proclamation recognized in October as National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and for this, we have Yvonne Perkin, Professional Contract Services, Inc., and Councilmember Branstadter.
Good evening, Perkins, and everyone who is on the call. It's my pleasure to read this proclamation. And I'll go right ahead. It says, whereas October 2021 marks the 76th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month, and whereas the purpose of National Disability Employment Awareness Month is to educate about disability employment issues and celebrate the many and varied contribution of America's workers with disabilities, and whereas workplaces welcoming of the talents of all people, including people with disabilities, are a critical part of our efforts to build an inclusive community and strong economy, and whereas activities during this month reinforce the value and talent people with disabilities add to our workplaces and communities, and affirm the city of Lakewood's commitment to an inclusive community that increases access and opportunities to all, and whereas the city of Lakewood celebrates the many and varied contributions of people of all abilities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby recognize and commemorates the 76th anniversary of National Disability Employment Awareness Month in the city of Lakewood, and calls upon employers, schools, and other community organizations to continue to take steps throughout the year to recruit, hire, retain, and advance individuals with disabilities, and work to pursue the goals of opportunity. Full participation, economic self-sufficiency, and independent living for people with disability. Proclaim this 18th day of October 2021. Don Anderson, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Branstadter, and if we have Ms. McClurkin, if she would like to say a few words.
Deputy Mayor, I don't see that Ms. McClurkin is on. If you are on, if you could please raise your virtual hand, you may be on under another name other than, um.
I see a hand raised under Y Mac.
Mr. Deputy Mayor, based upon this topic, perhaps Mr. Wheeler would want to say a few words.
That would be absolutely appropriate if he was there. Julian?
Oh, my gosh. Hi. Can you guys hear me?
We can. Thank you.
Ah, thank you so much. I'm struggling over here, but um, thank you so much on behalf of Professional Contract Services, Inc., for the proclamation for recognizing individuals with disabilities in the workforce. We truly, truly appreciate it. And once it's read to our employees, they will be ecstatic. So we really truly appreciate it.
We appreciate your service and all that you do for the community and your organization and value all that you're doing. So thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for having me.
You bet. Take care.
You, too.
Thank you. Next, we have a proclamation declaring October 21, 2021 as Community Conflict Resolution Day, and for this, we have Nancy Tam Davis, Board President, and Josh Brumley, Board Member for the Center for Dialogue and Resolution here in Pierce County, and will present this proclamation to you for the fine work you do in the community and your organization. I'm particularly proud to present this. I received my initial mediation training at the center and currently do a lot of mediation work myself. I value it as a lawyer in the community and believe very strongly in mediation as a means of resolving conflict, so. Whereas national, federal, state, regional, and local governments have an interest in promoting the use of mediation and nonviolent conflict resolution in setting a wide range and settling a wide range of disputes. And whereas the city of Lakewood promotes the use of creative and productive community-based dispute resolution by citizen mediators. And whereas mediation is an empowering, timely, and effective way to settle disputes as attested to by an 86% settlement rate. And whereas the city of Lakewood believes the conflict resolution process and training increases the capacity of our community to turn conflict into productive resolutions, which improves the quality of life for all residents. And whereas the third Thursday in October has been designated as International Conflict Resolution Day. Now therefore be it resolved that the Lakewood City Council hereby declares October 21, 2021 as Community Conflict Resolution Day here in the city of Lakewood to increase awareness of the various civil, nonviolent methods of conflict resolution available. Proclaim this 18th day of October 2021. Don Anderson, Mayor. So thank you very much. I believe we have some attendees that may want to say a few words. Ms. Schumacher?
Deputy Mayor, we have Nancy Davis here with us.
Great. Ms. Davis, would you like to say a few words?
And I'll unmute myself. As the best president of the Center for Dialogue and Resolution in Tacoma and Pierce County, we know there are better ways of dealing with conflict. We have 26 years' experience in this community dealing with conflict, and it is heartwarming to know that the city of Lakewood also acknowledges these efforts. And we know that conflict handed and handled in the very beginning can put an end to misunderstandings, can put an end to escalation, can avoid timely, time-costing, and expensive trials and sometimes difficult solutions for people. So thank you very much, the city of Lakewood, for this recognition. And if you're not doing anything this Friday, check in on our gala event from 5:30 to 7:30. Are commercials allowed?
Yes, of course. Thank you.
Thank you. Check in with the Center for Dialogue Resolution and jump on into our event. We'd love to see you.
Thank you, Nancy. Appreciate it. Thank you for coming. And now we turn to the public comments section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual comment. You may send comments in advance by mail or email to Ms. Schumacher, the city clerk at 6,000 Main Street, Southwest in Lakewood, or to her email address, b@schumacher@cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically. The clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance.
Deputy Mayor, we received comments in advance from Helen Wagner.
Thank you very much. Members of the audience may comment on items relating to any matter pertaining to city business under the public comment period. Your comments are going to be limited to three minutes per person. If you would like to provide a live virtual public comment tonight, you'll need to join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone number 253-215-8782, as indicated here on the screen, and enter the meeting ID that's listed, 868-7263-2373, or you can visit zoom.us and enter the meeting ID, 868-7263-2373. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name or chosen identifier. Use the raise your hand feature to be called upon by the city clerk. When you're unmuted, please provide your name and city residence for our record, and we will then allow each speaker three minutes to speak. Outside of public comment, all attendees on Zoom will continue to have the ability to virtually raise their hand for the duration of the meeting. You will not be acknowledged, however, and your microphone will remain muted except for when you are called upon. So Ms. Schumacher, if you will assist me in figuring out.
The first person who has signed up to speak would be Julian Mueller.
Mr. Wheeler.
Good evening, councilmembers. Bonjour, no senior deputy mayor. This is Julian Wheeler. Here as a volunteer member of the Pierce County Accessible Community Advisory Committee, which I happen to chair, and what I wanted to say first of all is happy Disability Employment Awareness Month, and congrats to the proponents for on having that proclamation read. It is with a paradoxical sense of pride that I can say I actually didn't request that. So it's good, in this instance, to see that there are others in this city as there have been for years, and I wasn't the first, hopefully not the last, to take an interest in disability issues and access in Pierce County and particularly Lakewood. We have a regular session meeting coming up in November, Tuesday, November 9, nine o'clock in the morning on Zoom to keep it accessible, and thank you, Lakewood City Council, for keeping these meetings accessible online with a note viewing. So we are we are acting in accordance with the Accessible Communities Act of 2010. We help expedite funding for accessibility projects in Pierce County. We are funded by revenue from the traffic, excuse me, parking ticket fines, people of people who park illegally in disability parking spots. So I usually say, darn you illegal parkers, but now I say, thank you, illegal parkers. You are helping fund a good cause. And I did want to invite people to our meeting. I understand it's a pretty specific niche, but I do think that everyone should take a direct and overt interest in accessibility. And there's a date coming up, which our organization, the ACAC, Pierce County endorsed, and that is organized by PAVE, which is Parents for Action Voices for Empowerment. And it's a developmental disabilities issues legislative forum, Tuesday, November 16 at 6:30 PM on Zoom, and it's a chance for constituents to directly engage their state legislators, and we'd love to hear from other people as well. So again, thank you for your work, and I do want to say also, happy Disability History Month, and thanks to the county executive for advancing that proclamation. So I see the Doomsday Clock is running down. Thank you all for your work. Thank you, Councilmember Branstadter, for entrusting me for the moment with commenting on the proclamation. But thank you. Take care and stay safe.
Thank you very much, Julian. I now see the hand raised. Penny Chrisia?
Hello, this is Christina Manetti.
Oh, thank you. The name showed up something different. Sorry.
Yeah, I know. It's from my Polish teaching class. So I'm Christina Manetti. I'm a Lakewood resident. I'd like to comment on a disturbing pattern in remarks made by members of the city council in response to public comments. At the end of the last city council meeting, Councilmember Farmer opened her comments about public comments with, at the risk of being taken out of context, which suggests that members of the public, in this case, I among them, took her words out of context. Her tone of voice, gestures, and smile, along with those of most council members, including a loud befar from Deputy Mayor Whelan, express a certain unity in their derision of our public comments. See fragment starting at 2:56, 2 seconds. Councilmember Bokey then seconded his colleagues' comments about public comment. Like Councilmember Farmer, who said they really do want public comment, trust me, Councilmember Bokey repeated that they, in fact, do want public comment. Like Councilmember Farmer, he too implies that comments by the members of the public cannot be trusted. I think that some of the things we said got a bit twisted, he said. See fragment starting at 2:56, 45 seconds. My questions are, exactly who took the council members' words out of context, and when? Why were they out of context, and what words were twisted exactly, and by whom? As a historian and translator, I am one to study the sources and choose words very carefully. I am not one to take words out of context and consider this an affront to my professional reputation. I would like to request an explanation in writing, which may be sent to my email address, my last name, at uw.edu. Saying the public comments are welcome in one breath, and in the next undermining the veracity of those comments makes the city council look very bad, as does making these accusations when the addresses are unable to respond. Along with the city's accusation that the Tacoma News Tribune article about the Oaks was full of inaccuracies, the council members' comments are reminiscent of the Lügian press tactic, the lying press, a favorite of the Nazi regime, which was a propaganda tactic to discredit political views that differed from their own by saying the press was full of lies and not to be trusted. Tragically, we have heard similar accusations in recent years in our own country. It would be profoundly disturbing to think that our own city government is employing such techniques. Perhaps the root of the problem is that the city council members should, as a rule, simply consider their own choice of words more carefully. If one is criticized for something one says and then regrets saying it, then the primitive knee-jerk response is often, of course, to say that the person doing the criticizing is lying. These council members' accusations are wholly unacceptable and a real offense to the members of the public who invest their time and energy into making comments. Thank you for your serious consideration of this matter.
Next, we have Fishamir Dunlop. Mr. Dunlop? We'll next move to James Dunlop. Mr. Dunlop, you're up.
Can you hear me now?
We can.
Okay, yeah, you can. Okay, my name is James Dunlop, and I'm a resident of Lakewood. Last time I did talk about public comments, and I'm sensing in the council, amongst council members, there is a certain amount of ambivalence towards council, towards public comments. On one hand, Councilmember Bokey talked about the dearth of public comments. I think that was the word he used, the dearth of public comments over the last few years, and that, you know, there's been a real gap there. On the other hand, there seems to be a feeling that you're disturbed by public comment. There's too much. It's all, you know, you're now talking about curbing them. But in terms of Lakewood and democracy in Lakewood, I do get this sense that a lot of people in Lakewood find it very difficult to express themselves. They're unwilling to express themselves, you know, whether it's about personal issues, I mean, like, you know, issues to do with their own particular lifestyle or wider issues, whether it's the destruction of the Oaks, or you know, wanting to express their feelings about, you know, we, I mean, last year, you, we had the killing of Said Yorkeem, you know, that issue. People are still afraid to express themselves. And I think, you know, the public comments are certainly a way for people to express themselves, and I just wonder whether the council want people to express themselves, or whether the council members actually think that they know, you know, what they know best, whether there's a sort of a patronizing view of the thing, that they don't actually really want to seriously engage with what's worrying people. And so I think, you know, the council members need to think about their role more. You know, it could be said that one possible role of the council of a council member is actually to inform the community. Ideally, a council member should be the eyes and ears. They should know what's going on, and if some, they themselves should know if something is not right, and it should be up to them to mobilize people, you know, like with in Oakwood with the the, you know, the destruct, potential destruction of, I think, 80 oak, 80 oak trees or more or whatever. You know, it should be up to a council member to help a community that can't properly, can't, doesn't feel, you know, able to communicate, feels afraid to communicate. So it should be up to the council members themselves. They should have the responsibility to speak for their community. At least, that's my view. So I do ask that you think carefully about what your role is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I see Kyle Jollyboy.
Good evening, council. A couple things. One thing I heard on topic was.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I apologize. My name's Kyle Jollyboys, and I'm a Tacoma resident, past Lakewood resident. Lived all my life in Pierce County. And Pierce County has some major issues happening. One, we have a climate emergency. There's an 8 million gallon LNG plant in the port of Tacoma waiting to be filled with liquid bi natural gas. That will put a 15-mile hole in Tacoma when it goes. One thing Lakewood is doing that I don't, you see, I have cerebral palsy, and cerebral palsy is lack of oxygen to the brain. And Lakewood is tearing down trees to put up monstrous footprints where the trees and parks and people were at one time. This is a wrong move to better Lakewood. Because without the port, you guys have nothing, because you guys are all, all about greed and building up and expanding and all that. One thing I'm unsure about why this has never come up among yourselves to help your own citizens. You guys do not have one cannabis shop in the city of Lakewood. You guys are losing millions of dollars a year in revenue. You would be able to tax that, which would bring in more money. Plus, you would be helping out your own citizens. Your citizens have to go to Tacoma to buy their cannabis. It's a medicine. It's not it's not like cocaine. It's not like heroin, even though it's scheduled. So what will it take for the city of Lakewood to jump on board with this climate emergency we're experiencing? And stop cutting down your trees and get some medical cannabis shops in your city to benefit your people? And I yield my time.
Thank you. Next, we have Fishamir Dunlop with a hand raised.
Can you?
Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Fishamir Dunlop, and I'd like to talk about drive-throughs. I went to Idlewild Elementary School, and one of my strongest memories was the line of cars in the afternoon that came up to pick up students. The cars would just sit there, idling away, pouring exhaust into the atmosphere. Did Idlewild parents really have that much money to burn, and did they care about the carbon footprint, about their carbon footprints? So I was really pleased to see a recent picture of a sign at the Idlewild parking lot that said, "No idling zone. Turn your key and be idle-free." So I would like to thank Idlewild Elementary School for showing such ecological sensitivity. However, it does raise issues for Lakewood. There are so many locations in the city where I see lines and circles of cars idling away belching pollution. For example, the Chick-fil-A near the post office seems always packed. It must surely be a major pollution hotspot. I wonder how this fits with the city's claim that it wants to be climate I wonder how this fits with the city's claim that it wants to take climate change seriously. In a climate emergency, we shouldn't be allowing drive-through establishments, and the city needs to take action. According to a CBS article from 2019, "Many cities in America are taking action against the drive-through businesses." "In the summer of 2019, Minneapolis banned the construction of new drive-throughs, and cities have passed laws restricting or banning fast-food drive-through windows." "I think it is time for Lakewood to take action, and this shows itself to be in the forefront of the fight against climate change." "I would strongly recommend that Lakewood starts to consider ways to end the pollution and congestion associated with drive-throughs. If other cities can take action, why not our city?" Thank you.
Thank you very much. Those are all the individuals I see on my screen with their hands raised. Is there any other individual who would like to address the council during this public comment period? Looks like Penny Chrisia?
It's actually Mrs. Wagner. She doesn't have her own computer.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes. I am Helen Wagner of Lakewood. It was hard to miss the lead article in Friday's TNT. Our native big-leaf maples are dying in unprecedented numbers. Investigators could find no diseases or insects that could account for the die-off. However, studies of growth strings indicated prolonged drought and higher temperatures are the culprit. What does this have to do with Gary Oaks, for which we have been advocating? Oaks and maples are not even in the same botanical family. But there's every reason to be worried. After the cedars, then the maples, in a few years in the future, if nothing is done to change the present course of global warming, the Oaks may be in trouble. This is no matter of just planting new ones. Oaks have much longer, take much longer to mature than maples do. And we have some beautiful large oak specimens in Lakewood. This is all the more reason to be stewards of what we have, because not only do we not have a limited not only do we not have a limited number of big oaks, but because of the nature of big trees in general, they provide one more element in our fight against global warming, simply because they create shade for a cooler microclimate. In the future, we must enact laws which will make it less likely that these treasures will be destroyed. Financial penalties for cutting Gary Oaks and big native trees in general should be stiff enough that it will hurt should one choose to disregard the law. In addition, tree-saving laws need to be enforced. I am here to request that legislation to save our Oaks and slow the warming of the planet be enacted when you review the law. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. I can't tell who the next one with their hand raised is. It looks like Munchy M O D. Please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Bunchy Bunchy Carter administered the message to the Black Panther Party, resident of Lakewood. I know normally, when you see me and my friends, my comrades, you feel like you're probably being attacked. I don't want to attack you tonight. Not at all. In fact, a lot of people are unaware that the number one candidate of the Black Panther Party is education. It's not guns. It's not, none of that stuff that people would tell you that it's about. It's education. But not the typical form of education. It's more about educating people to the reality of their situation, to the reality of their position in society. The thing that I think sometimes gets lost on people in positions of power is you represent a community that a lot of times you're not in touch with. Now, mind you, especially in a place like Lakewood, when I look at the voting numbers and look at the people who are registered against those who aren't, I recognize you probably are serving your constituents, so to speak, as in being the people who voted for you. But much like being elected the president of the United States, you're not just the Democrats or the Republicans president. You're everybody's president. If you're the city council of Lakewood, you're everybody's city council. Which means that everybody's voice should count. I'm not a tree hugger like some of my friends are, but I understand the importance. I'm not an idiot. I'm an educated person, much like all of y'all, I'm assuming. So let's not pretend like we don't see what's actually happening here. What's actually happening here is people who are not a part of controlling the institutions in their own community. Sometimes black choice of their own by not being active in the political process, granted. But those people feel like their voices are not being heard. And for those of us who decide to be the voice for those people, when we feel shunned, when we're called the peanut gallery, looked down upon by people that we're talking to and that we're reaching out to because we want answers, not more talk in circles. We want answers. When we can't find resolution in that aspect, when we have this open forum to talk, then we have no other choice but to take to the streets. We don't want to take to the streets. To me, it seems sometimes counterproductive. But the reality is, when you have people in pain, you will be heard one way or another. Justice Society, Joaquin, all power to the people.
Thank you. Next, we have Zillian Servio.
Hi, for the record, my name is Auxilium Servio. I am a member of the White Panther Party, a resident of Lakewood, Washington, and I am just here this evening because I really care about this community that I live in and I see a lot of problems every single day. That's why I joined the White Panther Party is because I want to see things change for the better. And I believe very much in the tenants of our ten-point platform, particularly around education. And so aside from some of the other things I want to take a moment and talk about this evening, I do want to go ahead and educate our council on the origins of the terminology peanut gallery. It's an incredibly racist term and it started back in the nineteen hundreds. And it was a name for the cheap seats usually in the black and during segregation. Oftentimes, those were the only seats that particularly African-American or black people were allowed to purchase. And so when you say things particularly like referring to members of the Black Panther Party as the peanut gallery, it's inherently rooted in racism. And I think that that's really problematic that members of our city council currently are unaware of racist terminology that they are using. This is one of the many, many reasons that I'm going to encourage anybody who is listening right now, anybody who's registered to vote in Lakewood or in Pierce County, to get out and vote. Please vote the people out who are problems on our council right now. We all deserve better. Right now, for months, we have been asking and begging for answers around the murder of Said Joaquin. He was a young man. He was loved. He had a family. His family cared about him and his family deserves justice. And they probably, like, the truth is, is that no amount of jail time for Mike Wiley, the murderous cop, will be sufficient. No amount of jail time will bring Said back. No amount. Nothing is going to be enough. But we need to start holding killer cops accountable here in Lakewood. And Mike Wiley has been involved in two murders of unarmed black men. And that is certainly, certainly a problem that our police chief, Chief Zarro should be addressing. We have work that we need to do and we need people in office that can do it. So I'm voting for Escobedo and I am voting for Ayuso. So I'm just saying, there's work to be done, y'all.
Next, we have trying to understand the name. It's S I K K. So if you'd please announce yourself for the record with your name and address. I see a hand raised. Would you like to address the council during the public comment session? If not, we'll skip to the next individual. Madam Clerk, do you see any other individuals with their hands raised?
Deputy Mayor, no one has their hand raised at this time to provide public comments.
Very good. Well, I will then declare the public comment session closed. We now turn to the consent agenda. Madam Clerk.
A, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting of September twentieth, twenty twenty-one. B, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. C, motion number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-four, authorizing the execution of an interlocal agreement between the cities of Lakewood, University Place, the town of Silicon and Pierce County Fire District Three for Emergency Management Services. D, motion number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-five, confirming the appointment of Lisa Mansfield as municipal court judge and authorizing the execution of an agreement with Lisa Mansfield to fill the municipal court judge term ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty-five. E, motion number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-six, authorizing the execution of a collective bargaining agreement with the Lakewood Police Independent Guild for the period of January one, twenty twenty-one through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-two. F, motion number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-seven, authorizing the execution of an agreement with DA Hogan and Associates in the amount of two hundred and fifty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-five dollars for design and engineering services for sports field improvements at Fort Silicon Park. G, motion number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-eight, authorizing the execution of an amendment to the interlocal agreement with Pierce College to design and develop a sports field at Fort Silicon Park. H, motion number twenty twenty-one dash sixty-nine, appointing Adriana Bond, Gabrielle Chappell and Willa Warren to the youth council for the twenty twenty-one through twenty twenty-two school year. I, items filed in the office of the city clerk, one, public safety advisory committee meeting minutes of April seventh, twenty twenty-one. Two, public safety advisory committee meeting minutes of June second, twenty twenty-one. Three, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of July sixth, twenty twenty-one. Four, public safety advisory committee meeting minutes of August fourth, twenty twenty-one. Five, Lakewood Arts Commission meeting minutes of September thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Six, Lakewood's Promise Advisory Board meeting minutes of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one. And seven, planning commission meeting minutes of September fifteenth, twenty twenty-one.
Thank you. Is there an item that any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time? Let's see, seeing none. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Move adoption of the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved by council member Branstadter and seconded by council member Bokey that we adopt a consent agenda as presented. Any further discussion? On paper, signified by Saint I.
I.
Any opposed? The consent agenda has been adopted. Thank you. We now turn to our regular agenda. We have no unfinished business. We turn to new business. Motion number twenty twenty-one dash seventy. Madam Clerk.
Motion number twenty twenty-one dash seventy, authorizing a contract with Lehi Hasmer Housing LLC in the amount of one million for the acquisition of real property located at eighty-six twenty South Hasmer Street, Tacoma, Washington, for operation as an emergency shelter through twenty twenty-three and thereafter for at least forty years as permanent affordable housing for tenants whose income is at or below fifty percent of the Pierce County area median income.
Thank you. And for this item, we have Ted Thielen. Give us some information and update.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yes.
Good evening, members of the council. Motion twenty twenty-one seventy, authorizes a contract with Low Income Housing Institute or LAHE, LAHE, Osmer Housing LLC, to contribute one million dollars towards the purchase of the Tacoma Comfort Inn. This project is among the first of our ARPA expenditures approved by ordinance seven fifty-nine. Pierce County, the city of Tacoma and the city of Lakewood are participating in a purchase agreement to acquire property to be used initially as emergency shelter through twenty twenty-three. Lakewood's contribution of one million secures twelve of the one hundred and twenty available beds per night for use by Lakewood clients. On January first, twenty twenty-four, the property will begin to be converted to low-income housing for people at or below fifty percent AMI. This property will be operated in this manner for no less than forty years. The funding for the project will be taken entirely from our city's ARPA award funds. That's our portion of it. A state of Washington rapid acquisition grant has been applied for. If that grant is secured, Pierce County, the city of Tacoma and the city of Lakewood will receive refunds. I believe that's partial refunds. Lakewood funds recovered in this manner will be used for administrative costs related to the twelve beds reserved for Lakewood clients. Should the motion be approved, the next steps are to sign the executed agreement and deliver it to LAHE ASAP. The alternative is to not, excuse me, the motion.
Very good. Are there any members who have questions for Mr. Thielen? Mr. Branstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I had two questions regarding the contract that's part of the motion. First, it does say that the period of time for the contract runs through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six, which is well into the time of when that this would cease to be a shelter. So what's the significance of that twenty twenty-six date?
I'm not sure on the significance of that particular date, although it will continue to be supportive housing into the future. So it won't, it's not like it'll just end and then that's the end of the project.
So I guess I'm does that date have something to do with that that's the last date we can use ARPA funds?
Yes, that is the, well, it's the date for when they have to be spent. That's the last day they have to be spent.
Okay, well, there are some provisions in the contract that speak to Lakewood being reimbursed if during the forty-year time period, the low-income housing folks were to sell the property. And so I'm wondering whether we are giving up our share of any appreciation or revenue that might come our way that the contract talks about, that if they sell it, there's money that comes through Tacoma and Pierce County and Lakewood. If the property is increased in value and is sold and being able to go and do that. And I guess I'm concerned if that twenty twenty-six date means after that period of time, we're giving that up.
As far as I know, the part of the, part of the contract is that the property will be operated as supportive housing for no less than forty years.
Say that if they don't and if they sell it, that there is some reimbursement process and schedule that we would get some, some money back. And so I'm wondering why, again, that the, the data, the contract for Lakewood ends in twenty twenty-six. If we have, continue to have an interest in that property for the entire forty years.
Yeah, I'm unsure of the significance of that date, other than that's the end date for spending ARPA funds.
I guess that is, I guess that would be something that I would want the city attorney and city manager to resolve before they actually sign the contract, even though I think that I'm in favor of giving the city manager that approval. My second question has to do with, it's long been a policy of the city of Lakewood that as we do contracts with folks that we have a provision in the contracts that they have to be a utilizer of e-verify for their employees. And I didn't find that in this contract. Is there, the Low Income Housing Institute object to that provision? Or why are we not including that in this contract as we have, it's been our policy and standard for quite a while.
I agree that I don't see it in the contract either. I would definitely defer to the city attorney on that.
Member Branstadter, members of the city council mandated e-verify for all contracts. And so that not being there is something that the council, I don't even think you've allowed yourself the ability to waive it. So it needs to be added to the contract. I'm in the process of reviewing the contract right now, so I can certainly make sure it's added. I don't know how Lehi will feel about it, but this council has not waived that for any contract since that requirement has been put in place.
So I guess that is that something that we can approve the motion as it is with an understanding that the city manager and yourself will ensure that the contract gets that incorporated? Or would you prefer that we do an amendment to the motion to add that?
I, I think the council has already required it of all contracts that are, that are forward. It is a legal requirement imposed by the city council. Lots of discussion and at the time the council adopted this about what if any number of different potential reasons somebody would not want to do it and the council was very clear, they want that language in every contract.
Okay, so I would just guess that if the Low Income Housing Institute is unwilling to have that added to the contract, that I would urge that we then not sign it. But with that, I'm I'm good with the, you know, this is a regional project that we're signed on to support. We can just make it pass our own legal muster. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Hey, Ted, I just got a question about this. I lost, now I've lost the page where they, they discuss the the grant that they're asking for from the state of Washington. Can you give us a little background on that?
I actually, I believe the information.
It was the bottom of page, something or other and.
Yes. So we've got part C. Sorry, I'm not looking at the, the agenda. I'm looking at the actual documents. I've got a different page. It says they've applied, yes, they've applied for the maximum amount allowed by program guidelines. I'm not sure really beyond that. I'm not sure really beyond that on the, the specifics of that grant.
So then are but then it says, I, I thought I was reading here that we would get some of our money back, but you mentioned that it would go towards operations. So are we on the hook for operations?
No, that would just be for administrative fees for the 12 beds that Lakewood clients would be using.
Okay. Okay, so do they have a total cost on this? I guess it's 11 million, 10 million?
Well, it's 5 million, 5 million and 1 million from us, so I believe that would be 11.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Thanks, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Bokey. Are there any further questions by members of council on this particular motion? If not, thank you, Mr. Thielen. I appreciate your appearance tonight.
Thank you.
To adopt motion 2021-70. I need a motion. Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Been moved by councilmember Farmer and seconded by councilmember Bokey that we adopt motion 2021-70, authorizing the contract with Lehigh Osmer Housing LLC, provided it first contains the language enunciated by Mr. Brandstadter and as confirmed by our city attorney. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion 2021-70 has passed. Thank you. We now turn to reports by our city manager.
Evening Deputy Mayor and councilmembers. First, I'd like to call upon our Public Works Engineering Director, Paul Bucic, to give you an update on where we are with the, some work on the Clover Creek regarding the floodplain analysis that was initiated a couple of years ago, coupled with the next steps that he's proposing to move forward that would then come forward to this body for review and consideration, either by the end of the year, probably the early part of 2021. So with that, Mr. Bucic, city clerk, if you could bring him in. Thank you.
Good evening, Deputy Mayor Whalen, members of the city council. And tonight, as the city manager indicated, I want to give you an update on where we are with our work on the floodplain situation on Clover Creek. You just minimize a few things here, so I can actually see what else is on my screen, if I may. Back in August of 2019, we came to the city council with information concerning the analysis of the Clover Creek floodplain. As you recall, if you may recall, our expectation was the floodplain was going to shrink, not only in size, but also depth. But for a variety of reasons which are outlined in the memo to council, we ascertained that in fact the floodplain had, was bigger than what FEMA had anticipated. We submitted a letter of map revision to FEMA to modify the floodplain. Late 2019, early 2020, they came back and said, we believe that the floodway is actually going across the freeway based on what we're seeing here. Do you want to proceed or do you want to look for other alternatives? After giving us some consideration and knowing the impacts of what a floodway determination is to properties, as well as to the State Department of Transportation, we decided we were going to rescind our request and go back and rethink about what kind of engineering alternatives we might have to alleviate or eliminate the flooding. In the 2021-22 budget, Public Works Engineering was authorized to conduct an engineering alternatives evaluation to find out if we could do that, if we could reduce the impacts. We have conducted interviews with qualified engineering consulting firms, and we selected Brown and Caldwell to lead this effort. We have negotiated a scope of work with Brown and Caldwell. As the city manager indicated, and we expect to bring that forward to you, I believe sooner than the end of the year, we might be able to bring it forward as early as November. When we did this work with Brown and Caldwell, we talked an awful lot about how the work was going to go down. And we recognized the fact that a lot of this work needs to incorporate a public outreach component. Previous work we had done, our primary public outreach was through the city council and our website. But now what we're talking about is we're talking about coming up with engineering alternatives that could very well affect people's properties by having setback levies, pipelines going through there, et cetera. We also feel it's really important that all the businesses and homeowners who are impacted understand the nature of the work. So our budget, and we had anticipated, has grown. We have an extensive public outreach component to this body of work to include not just public meetings, but also direct one-on-one interfaces with JBLM, Sound Transit and other major entities. We also have, are proposing to develop a stakeholders committee of regulatory agencies. Anything we do in the floodplain or in the creek is going to run into Department of the College, Department of Fish and Wildlife, Department of XYZ and the State Department of State of Washington. So we're going to have a lot of regulatory agencies touching us and, and talking to us about what's going to be acceptable. It's been my experience that it's always best to involve them early and often when you're dealing with these types of situations. So we are going to have a very specific stakeholders group of regulatory agencies. They're going to be working through with us as we go through this on the concept development, the alternatives evaluation and the final recommendations. I want to know what they're going to have problems with, any solutions that we have, so we can come up with solutions, if at all possible, to their objections to a project moving forward. With that, we still have a significant cost differential from what was budgeted 125,000 and where we are now, which is about $270,000. I've reached out to the Pierce County Flood Control Zone District and asked them if we could get a $150,000 allocation of our accumulated funds. There's $196,000 to date. And today I got an authorization letter from them saying, yes, they would agree to that disbursement, should we move forward with this work. With the $46,000 left in there and the approximately $82,000 a year we get accredited to us from the citizens of Lakewood, we would have about approximately $120,000, $25,000 for next year to be used if we needed to go out and do some additional treatment of Waha Lake or other projects. And that will continue to accumulate until such time we have a project that meets the Flood Control Zone District's parameters. Excuse me. Along with the work that we're proposing to do here, I've been involved with Pierce County Surface Water Management and the Flood Control Zone District over the last six months. Pierce County Surface Water Management is updating their 2020, updating their comprehensive flood hazard plan. I'm on their advisory committee. They do it every five years. Last time I was updated in 2018, the first one was created in 2013. What they are doing this time is they are actually adding some components of work that can be included and funded by the Flood Control Zone District. And this is important because typically historically, they've only done riverine. So now they are expanding to include urban flooding, coastal flooding and groundwater flooding. If we get our engineering evaluation done soon enough, before everything's finalized, and/or we put a placeholder in their body of work, then our project now becomes subject to funding by the Flood Control Zone District and Surface Water Management. Most of Surface Water Management's riverine work is, is covered by the Flood Control Zone District. So we're in a good place to be able to get our project, which is regional in nature, as we all recognize. We don't generate this water. It comes to us from up above in the basin. And we're the ones having to deal with it. It is regional. State Department of Transportation will shut down I-5, JBLM will be impacted and Sea Lake will be impacted. So we need all, we tick all the boxes for the work that they're looking to go forward and start, start funding. They've also changed their planning horizon from a 20-year planning horizon to a 10-year planning horizon. So that, that bodes well for us getting our project in their list, or at least recognized, and helps us on getting it funded. Some of the other things that are relatively new, if you will, to this body of work, we had not envisioned when we came up with the first cost estimate, was that in consultation, in conversation with Brown and Caldwell, they made a really good case. I agree with this, that we do a business case evaluation of the alternatives. It's very easy to say, well, this is what the project is going to cost. But what is often ignored is this is what the project is going to cost if you don't do anything. I-5 shut down for three to five days. There's a fiscal impact to our community, to every other community, and that needs to be quantified. These other alternatives that we come up with and move forward, and then a preferred alternative, we need to be able to tell regulatory agencies, state agencies, funding agencies and federal funding agencies, how our project is going to be more cost-effective than doing nothing. And so the business case evaluation is something that will help set us up for going after state and federal grants. It will also, with the community support, help us be prepared to talk to legislators at the state and federal level when they're looking at a wide variety of different problems they have to fund and how to go about doing it. We need to be prepared, my opinion, to answer those questions. And now's the time to do it, rather than coming back and asking us to, oh, could you go back and do a business case? Could you go back and think about this? We're trying to cover all of our bases at this time. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on the work we're moving forward with, or we're proposing to move forward with.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bucic. Any questions? It's a good overview. So are we going to be approving a contract change for an increased budget amount at some point in time, Mr. Coffield?
Deputy Mayor Whalen, actually it would be a brand-new standalone contract that, that will be coming before you. And given that, given that we just learned today that we have the opportunity to utilize the Flood Control Zone dollars, it is likely that this will come before you, before the end of the year. We weren't quite sure on the timing of when we would get approval for that. So it's good news, that's good news to report that Mr. Bucic has said.
Mr. Brandstadter.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Mr. Bucic, as we are looking, and I certainly agree with you of making the business case or whatever options we ultimately decide upon to do at the, at the end of this, this contract is to develop that plan. But going in, in the talk of the year-term solutions, what's our target solution? I mean, it's not to reduce the floodplain to zero. It's what percentage smaller do we want to do? Or are there some aspects of the floodplain we want to mitigate?
Councilmember Brandstadter, thank you. That's an excellent question. That's something we're going to be wrestling with at the start of this work. Since we don't know what the alternatives that can be supported by the regulatory agencies are, it's difficult to push hard to eliminate all the flooding. I think an expectation that we're going to eliminate all the flooding at all the time is going to be overly zealous and optimistic. I think realistically, we're going to be looking for a solution that reduces the flooding quite a bit, stops the flooding on I-5, stops the flooding across I-5 on Pack Highway, Bridgeport, Pack Highway, et cetera, that reduces the footprint of the flooding within the Springbrook neighborhood significantly, so that development or redevelopment can occur effectively. We have some ideas preliminarily, like setback levies. There was a pipeline that was evaluated back in 1998 to 2002. It's a very large pipeline to take all the water to Silicon Lake. It's a very expensive solution. I think what we're going to end up is, it's going to be a balance between what we can get permitted, funded, and the degree of flood reduction we're going to get.
So in terms of the the range of actions that the contractor would look at, is that going to include, well, it's going to include infrastructure-type solutions, is it going to include anything in the, in the nature of land use solutions or recommendations on zoning? We know we, we did do some rezoning of an areas of Springbrook based on the existence of the floodplain and is defined by, by FEMA a number of years ago. So is that going to be a part of the scope of this work?
Councilmember Brandstadter, no, it is not. Our goal is to look at engineering solutions and alternatives. We do have a couple of council meetings in the budget to come and present where we are to council to get your feedback on it. If that is something that you take into consideration, that would be more about how the land would be developed. But if it's in the floodplain, it still has the same problem with having to meet, or challenge, I should say, having to meet compensatory storage, should any fill be placed in there? And having to elevate structures up above the flood by one foot. If we can effectively cut the amount of flooding in the floodplain, the actual aerial mass land that gets impacted by half, that would be a significant strike forward, because that would mean I-5 and all the properties north of I-5 would not, would no longer be seeing flooding.
And I think it's, it's, it's good that the Flood Control Zone District is amenable to us taking the opportunity funds in, in our account to, to use for this, the, the study and this work goes, goes forward. You mentioned that there would still be some funding if we needed to do something with Waha Lake. But what's the process in place to determine we're going to need to do something more in Waha Lake?
Councilmember Brandstadter, we've received a report in the last few weeks by one individual that there was a, the toxic algae were back. We have gone out, we have taken water quality samples and sent them off to a laboratory. We'll get those back on Thursday to make a determination. I've spoken with our consultants about this, and they informed me that almost every state, or every lake in the state that has had any toxic algae has had a problem this year. We did not have a problem through the last two summers. This late in the season, as I indicated to the city manager, it's not a surprise to me. If we did, I would prefer we didn't. But the lake level is extremely low. We've had such a, such a heat, heat wave come through with little rain that it would, it would have been a perfect condition for that lake to explode. Now, based on the results from the testing and then water quality samples that we'll be taking, we'll be determining with our consultants whether it's time for that third treatment, which we have been talking about since they came out with their first report. They indicated we might probably need one the following year, but we didn't need it. And so it's no surprise if we do need to treat it next year. But we'll be watching this very carefully to see if it's time to treat it.
Good, and we didn't anticipate any need for Flood Control Zone Opportunity Funds with doing our projects either in the Chambers Creek Canyon development or the mitigation of a species along, a race of species in the Springbrook Park.
Councilmember Brandstadter, the, the opportunity funds are very narrow limited on what they can be used for. I'm not aware of any projects within the city of Lakewood that we would use these funds for, other than these two instances we've spoken of. That is part of the reason why we have such a large amount of money sitting in the opportunity fund, because frankly Lakewood has got great soils and everything drains into the ground. So right now, my answer to you is we do not have another project anticipated beyond those two for the next couple of years.
Good, thank you. That's all I have as Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Bokey.
Paul, what, can you explain the maps on 179 and 180? That's the, it is the, looks like the flood zone, but one says levy intact and the other says levy removed. So is there a levy right there? And is that one of the considerations?
Councilmember Bokey, there is in fact an old remnant of a levy there. The last time this was brought forward in great detail to council, we explained that there, that, that old levy, since it wasn't built per FEMA reg- there, that, that old levy, since it wasn't built per FEMA requirements, actually the Army Corps of Engineer requirements. We are not allowed to consider it as being functional when we're doing our flood analysis. Those graphics were presented to show to council what the difference would be if there was a levy there that met the standards versus that doesn't. When the levy is allowed to breach in the model, the flooding actually gets worse. That's a good indication and an illustration of a setback levy and the functionality of one along the creek, how we could actually help protect and alleviate the flooding across the floodplain.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Well, thank you very much. If there are no further questions, we'll bid you adieu for tonight, Mr. Bucic, but thank you for the update. Very much appreciated.
Have a good evening.
Next.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, Deputy Mayor, I'd like to call upon our city attorney, Heidi Wagner, who would like to do a walkthrough, talk through on your council rules of procedure. If you recall, several weeks ago, the council asked us to make some changes to your rules of procedure. And so we are reporting back this evening on what they are. If, if the council so desires to move forward with making these changes, we can bring them back for your final consideration as part of your next regular meeting on November first. If not, you know, we can continue to work on whatever it is you need per your direction and come back later on in November, early December. So with that, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager, Acting Mayor, members of the council. I'm Heidi Walker and I want to let you know that the city clerk and myself and the city manager met a couple of different times, making sure that we were tracking with the comments that the council had. As you can tell, the cover sheet on page one eighty-one is pretty brief and it's brief because really what we're trying to do is just take the rules that you have and do a little bit of housekeeping here and there, but primarily get at the things that you talked about. I'm going to first call your attention to page one eighty-six. You noted that in this day and age, physical presence may not be the order of the day in all of our different council meetings. In the second paragraph that starts with four or more council members, there's a track change there. We took out whether things require extenuating circumstances and the like, and we simply said attendance and or voting by telephone or video conference constitutes presence at the meeting. And for a very long time, that would have been enough to violate the Open Public Meetings Act. So my position was always that that should count as attendance if it can violate the Open Public Meetings Act. So any, any type of attendance that you all are good with qualifies now. And that would be attending from Italy by Zoom as far fetched example as that might be. So then we go to pages one eighty-eight and one eighty-nine. If you go down to the bottom there at that section three point five, your public comments, you'll see a lot of red there. We're trying to balance what we perceive to be sometimes the targeting of agencies or First Amendment arguments. But also provide the power to the mayor to kind of run an orderly meeting. Because a lot of times you guys actually have scheduled business that you want to address, but at the same time you want to hear concerns of the public. So what we've done is we've allowed the mayor the authority to shorten individual speakers in order to fit all of the comments. If you have a room full of people, you don't have to go three minutes per person. You can say we're only going to do public comments for an hour. And that means everybody will speak a little less long in order that we can hear from everyone. So that's the intent of that first part. The public sign up sheets, there's an RCW that specifically prohibits conditioning public testimony on any requirement whatsoever from the person. And so if they want to be included in our minutes, we're going to ask them to identify themselves. If they don't identify themselves, they won't be identified in the minutes. Their comments will make it in, but you won't know who the person making them was. So we've tried to clarify that piece. There was a comment from the council where we wanted to stagger one month, you'd hear from the virtual, the next month you'd hear from the live first. It was in terms of who has to wait for the other one to hear. And we thought, well, you have two regular meetings a month. You have the first meeting of the month, a regular meeting, then you have a study session and you have the second regular meeting. So what we opted to offer you is at the first regular meeting each month, in-person comments will be called to speak first. And at the second regular meeting each month, the phone and video conference comments will be called to speak first. So in that way, they each get a chance to go first. And then written comments and our clerk did a little bit of research with other cities and city manager emphasized that we wanted to see how different cities do it. We are putting in the rules that written comments can be provided in advance by mail or email. Send comments to the city clerk. Those will be distributed to you all as the city council. And comments that are received up to one hour before the meeting will be provided to the council in advance of the meeting. And the meeting minutes will reflect the receipt of those comments. So that's how we're dealing with the written comments. I would then turn your attention to page one ninety-six in the packet. And that's where down at the bottom, these last two sections, sixteen and seventeen, one has to do with confidentiality. And we specifically cite the RCW that prohibits disclosure of confidential information learned by reason of your official post. There are times when we have an executive session where the information that you have, at least for the time being, needs to be confidential to protect the interests of the city. If you receive requests for public disclosure, you will coordinate response to that through the city. Because it's really the city that's on the hook for those kinds of requests. And then section seventeen, electronic media and communication, we put in a line that simply says city business shall be conducted exclusively on city issued equipment. Such equipment will be maintained by the city. And again, that underscores what you already know, which is that you can do your personal stuff. You can put your personal opinions and all that stuff on your own equipment. You can answer what you think about a constituent's position in a personal venue. But if you are expressing the will of the council or the city's position, that will be done with city equipment. So that's what we came up with as we went through. I'd be happy to do better on another try at it. If that's what you think we need or put it in final form and bring it before the council for adoption.
Thank you very much. Any questions of Ms. Walker? See my screen here. Hold on.
I saw council member Brandstetter's hand go up and then he put it back down. So I don't know if he thought better of it or.
I see it's still on. Councilmember Brandstetter.
Hey, Mr. Deputy Mayor, thank you, Ms. Walker, Ms. Schumacher and Mr. Caulfield for your, for your work on this for us. I had a couple of questions. And let me find my reference page. On page one eighty-six. There is a strikeout in the third paragraph that's not in red. But it's a strikeout that you didn't mention in your comments about had to do with study sessions and future consent agenda items. Was that removed just because it was superfluous or?
That, that is our position. Councilmember Brandstetter and members of the council. We believe that the rules that you wish to adopt pursuant, that are specific to the consent agenda are covered in a section about the consent agenda. And so we were looking for any streamlining opportunities we could find there. If that is not consistent with your read, we can obviously put it back, but that was the intent.
I, I actually was sort of always of the opinion that that sort of goes without, went without saying.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, and I'm fine with that. Then on page one eighty-eight under public comments.
Correct.
We've added the provision that the comments are limited to three minutes per person, but may be shortened to accommodate a large number of speakers in the time set by the mayor. And I think I would prefer that instead of saying mayor, it said presiding officer. But this evening, we don't actually have the mayor presiding and we use the term presiding officer elsewhere. And then we, we're doing away with the provision that if a group wants to make comments, that we would grant them ten minutes as long as they were, they, they had. We've, I guess we've decided that three is a quorum for a group. Why is the recommend, I, I don't recall in our discussions wanting to eliminate that. So why is that the recommendation?
Well, obviously, different people at the same meeting, they come away with different things. My perception was that there was a concern that sometimes you get people who may or may not have a sizable group taking ten minutes of time. And there was an interest in removing that. If, if that is not the will of the council, I obviously stand corrected. I do remember when we added this to the council rules. And the theory was that when you have, let's say, ten people all speak for three minutes and they all have the same point of view and they're all saying the same thing, why don't you condense them into one person speaking on behalf of all of those people for ten minutes instead of the thirty minutes as, as it goes. So obviously, if I got it wrong, we'll change that. But my understanding was that there were at least some voices when we met saying that the ten minutes for supposed groups was not the best use of time. But that's obviously why we bring this back to you to see how you're feeling about.
I guess, I guess that, that wasn't my specific recollection of the discussion.
It was mine.
It discussed the fact that it was hard to do with virtual speakers. But that with folks that are, with, but with groups that are physically present and come to and we're making allowances for both types of comment. That you sometimes could get some more coherent public comments if a group designated a speaker and, and did that than if you break, break it up. So while I think that I would open the matter up, Mr. Deputy Mayor, for maybe some discussion. I'd be in favor of at least retaining that as regards to people that are physically present. And then I had one other point that I need to look at and we seem to have on page one eighty-nine eliminated the requirement for anyone making public comment to reflect their name. And whether they live in Lakewood. And I, I, and I really would like to retain the requirement that a speaker, when they, whether in person or virtually come up, that they tell us their name and that and whether, where, where they're a resident of.
Councilmember Brandstetter, I'm going to cite to you RCW forty-two thirty zero four zero conditions to attendance not to be required. And it's basically saying that a, a member of the public shall not be required as a condition speaking at the meeting to register their name and other information or any other, then it lists a whole bunch of other things. Now, I, there are some that might read that as just whether or not they can attend the meeting. I think if you're following the spirit of that RCW, you can't condition people's testimony on that requirement to identify themselves. And so what we would rather say is that it's not going to be in the minutes as who the speaker is if you don't identify yourself. If you choose to have yourself reflected in the minute, you need to identify yourself and, and then we can put that in there. But I think conditioning condition, putting conditions on people's ability to speak at a meeting, even though it seems like such a small hurdle. The way things are swinging these days is it's, it's not viewed in a favorable light.
So is this an RCW that has been changed in the twenty-five years of cityhood? Because it's it's something that's, that's been the, the practice since the first council.
Correct, but that is the current RCW. And I don't know that the RCW has changed. And I think what you're talking about is required in some cities. That's true. But I'm, I'm just telling you what the RCW says. And so if you want to be completely compliant, the safest, most conservative course is to say we can't put your name as a speaker in the minutes if you don't give us your name as a speaker. But if you choose to not identify yourself. For us to make that a requirement, it, it could become a contentious thing that really ends up being more of a problem than it's worth. And I guess the other.
I, 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 however, it is, I, I would just say to me, it is worth something.
That's assuming that they identify themselves accurately. And, and I'm not, I'm not trying to take it to an unreasonable intellectual extreme. But honestly, you don't necessarily know who the person is when they do give you a name or where they live. And we haven't barred people from testifying when they've made it clear not from Lakewood. So it begs the question of, of what the underlying purpose is. So we can put it back in there because you're right. We've been doing it that way for many years.
Yeah, and I, I guess that I would I'm reluctant to change that if the issue hasn't been raised by by anyone. And I guess that I'm not aware of another city or municipal entity that doesn't look for a person to identify themselves. I don't know that they go in and double check it and, and, and ask to see an ID card. And certainly we don't have any requirement for people to identify themselves to just be present at an open meeting. But Deputy Mayor, I, I defer that one also to the group to see what we think.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Councilmember Bell, if you're done, Mr. Brand Center.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I, I just had a question over three point five over the public comments part. I just feel like it's a little arbitrary. So to be consistent, like what would determine what is a large number? And also what would be the time that would be said? It would be nice if there was something concrete, so it's consistent every single time.
And that's a discussion point for the council.
Well, folks, let's talk about that one first and then we'll go back to Mr. Brandstetter's comment about the identification piece. Thoughts on what Councilmember Bell's brought up? Ms. Farmer.
In my experience, the, if there are a lot of people in the room, you know, I'm, I'm not entirely sure what, it's usually when the room is packed and there's a little bit of, a lot of subjectiveness in some cases. But typically it goes from the three minutes to one minute if it looks like there's a lot of people in the room. And so that would be my recommendation is that we would, we would go from three minutes to one minute.
I like the three minutes to one minute, but like what would the, a lot of people be?
Yep.
I becomes discretionary at the at the chair's discretion, I assume, right? Go ahead, Mr. Brandstetter.
Oh.
Mr. Boke.
Okay, I, I do. I, 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 I think that the, I'm a little reluctant to say that public comment time can be adjusted so that the public comment period wouldn't exceed an hour. Okay, you, you, you know, you know. I suffered through that testifying before the legislature. I suffered through that testifying before the legislature this past session of where uh, they were, they they were, they were attending to do that, and I think that the the time uh, having a set, setting, setting a time like an hour for public comment. Uh, and if and and then adjusting the amount of time based on the number of people that have signed up yeah, is possibly doable, but uh, but I can also take a look at a meeting like this evening where our agenda is not crowded. We could have allowed more time for public comment than if we had a meeting that was going to have a very uh busy agenda. And at the same time, with a sense for what a large number of attendees are coming to comment about, we may well want to allow more time for that, to to be able to go and do that. So while I agree with Councilmember Bell that it is not concrete in terms of exactly what it is. Uh, I am more comfortable with the allowing the presiding officer to consider all the factors around on a specific date from what's out, what else is on the agenda, how many people are there? Uh, and uh what are we going on then? Uh, restricting ourselves and thus restricting the public to into a timeframe.
Ms. Walker, you have some thoughts?
I would caution the council to linking time and topic. Um, if you believe that there's something that um merits extra public comment, whereas the next week you decide that the topic isn't as relevant, that is um that gets into dangerous territory, and I appreciate Councilmember Branstad's point, I would not solve it in the public comment arena. We have dealt with issues before like fireworks in a different way than simply expanding public comment, and I think that that was a a safer course.
Thank you, Mr. Boke, and then Ms. Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, a couple of things, you know, uh, on the time limit thing. The reason that I would, I would put something like that in for a regular meeting is that there is an agenda that we are supposed to accomplish. And the idea is that you're gonna accomplish that when people are awake, right? And if public comment goes for three hours, which it it typically doesn't in Lakewood, you're really not doing the people's business at eleven o'clock or midnight. I mean, that that's just not good government. And you shouldn't public your co- public comment yourself into inaction, right? And there are other opportunities, so that that's the purpose. I don't know that I would keep it at an hour. I would actually go out farther. I would do two hours or something like that. I think we could go to nine and probably still accomplish most of what we need to on the agenda, right? I mean, we could skip like a topic like this on a night like this, if it was eleven o'clock, we could just say we're done. Just move this to the next agenda, which we're always reluctant to do, but that's our fault. Um, so I I would give several hours, actually. But if there are fifty people and 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 like the folks tonight mentioned, that doesn't happen in Lakewood really very much. The other thing is is that if it's a really hot topic, you can have, you can have other public sessions strictly devoted to that topic. Um, so it and and there are, you know, bites, other bites at the apple, so I would be so I don't know, do we give a hard number that at two hours, we cut it down to a minute or at ninety minutes, we cut it down to a a minute, or if there's seventy-five speakers on the thing on the list, right away, the mayor can just say it's two minutes tonight, or it's one minute, I don't know. I mean, those are the, that's what we'll have to. Um, but that's where I'm coming from. Um. The ten-minute one, I was the one that brought up, I think, last time. I've never I don't understand what a group is under the writing that they have here. So a and and so there's no definition to what a group is, and then it doesn't exclude the other people from the group speaking. So if they, and and I've got somebody who wants to come and speak for his group, so what do I tell him? Right now, I can say, well, you got ten minutes if you speak for the group, I guess. If he does, if he meets the qualifications, which the qualifications really aren't in our in anywhere in our, in our thing of what what represents a group. Now, I always think it would be, it's really clear if somebody from one of the neighborhood associations come and says, well, I'm president of the na- North Lakewood Neighborhood Association, I'd I'd like to speak for ten minutes on this topic. But I think we would give them that anyway if they ask, so. That that's another, that's why I have the objection to the group, it's not defined, it could be um, and and kind of lends itself to, you know, wha- what is that, and there's no definition, and so the mayor has to make, or the presiding officer has to make that decision. Um, I like the idea, idea, you know, Paul Boke Lakewood uh, part of it, if it's against the law, so be it, but um allowing um Zoom, and and that's what we're gonna do under this. There has, there have been rumors um of some cities fairly close by that get calls from all over the country. Well, I mean, like we do, right? So what, I mean, is that I don't know. We've never talked about restricting those kind of outside calls today, so I I I I'll live with whatever the state tells us to on that, but the time limit, I would be very flexible on that. If you if you want a a set time out there, I would say, you know, no no sh- no shorter than ninety minutes. I think we should be prepared to accept at least ninety minutes of public comment every time we sit down. And we've, I think we've gotten close to that a few times.
Thank you. Councilmember Farmer?
I'm, I'm really having a hard time with the idea of limiting public comment, even if it's an hour or two hours. Because we, just because we might have a packed agenda, we always have a packed agenda. And people are here to give their say, and so um, if, I guess I'd like to 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 divorce the idea of uh, an overall length of time for public comment, and if there are a lot of people online or a lot of people in the room, um, the mayor or the chair or the presiding officer makes that determination, whether it's one minute or two minutes, but not say you can only have so much public comment, it just, I it just goes against every fiber of my being. Um, so I'll throw that out there. Um, I am not in favor of um bringing back the designated speaker for for ten minutes. I I have often found that to be a little bit odd because typically, um, well, you might have a a bunch of like-minded folks who would like to come and say their piece, but they're not part of a group. And so um, we might want them or suggest, hey, you, if you guys have the same message, you can, you can appoint somebody to speak for you. I think that's us legislating for them, and so I would rather um, as uh Councilmember Boke said, if they would like to request it, uh, can we have ten minutes? Um, I don't know if we have to have that in our rules of procedure in order for that to happen. If we do, then it might need to be written slightly differently. I did have uh, one question. We have, and and but Councilmember Branstad may have pointed this out, um, but I want, there was a nuance there that may have been missed. On page one eighty-seven, it mentions a mayor or a chair. And then page one ninety-three and possibly in other pages, it talks about a presiding officer. So with whichever, I I'm agnostic as to which we pick, if it's chair or presiding officer, as long as it's consistent. Um, the last thing I want to bring up is a i- is around this idea of identifying oneself. And I'm curious, I I'm I'm okay either way, but I'm curious how how we might put that into practice in the minutes. For example, would we say an unidentified speaker? And then another unidentified speaker rather than a a male speaker or a identified female speaker, I I just, I worry that we might get into some trouble in assuming that we know who is speaking and how they want to be referred to, so it would have to be pretty generic. Thank you.
And on that last point, uh, you know, Councilmember Moss. And then Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I just, I wanted to say that I think it would be to the discretion of the the um presiding officer, if we have it spelled out upfront, if we let the audience know that we have a large group tonight, we're gonna condense the public speaking in comments to one minute, oh, minute and a half, or whatever we decide, but as long as it's spelled out and they don't feel like it's me that you're just cutting it out on, I think we can, we can work it that way. That's how I see it.
Councilmember Bell?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Yes, I I love the being spelled out. I just felt like it was too arbitrary. And I do not think that we should limit the public comment at all. If it's a long night, it's a long night. Um, I just feel like putting those kind of parameters on there is just not something that we should be doing, so I, and then as far as identifying themselves, I would agree with being very, very uh nonspecific with how you would identify someone who doesn't want to come across with their identity down. That's it.
Thank you. Well, my my thought is I would prefer that we not limit public comment if if we can avoid it, at least in our rules, I think we should be more open. I think if it comes to the point where we are all physically exhausted or mentally exhausted by midnight or eleven or whatever it is, we can just, we'll have to shove other things on the agenda to the next meeting. You know, it's simply, and of course, it's up to the chair, but if I were the chair, I would open up to the council and say, you know, does the council want to adjourn or move over items A, B, and C to the next meeting in lieu of reducing public comments? That, that's kind of my approach to it. I think we should leave public comments as open as we can and not limited. With regard to the identification piece, I think it's really odd not to have folks identify themselves because a- as the chair, you want to at least you know, extend the pleasantry and say, Ms. or Mr. so-and-so, uh, you know, welcome, or please give us your comment, or you're next, or whatever it is. It's really hard to do that with an unidentified person. So I think we should try, you know, keep that in, and if we're concerned about the legality of the RCW, it might be an MRSC issue to to float over to them and see what they have seen in other cities as best practices, or whether this has ever been an issue.
I don't think it's ever been an issue, Mr. Deputy Mayor, we can certainly change that.
Yeah, I would. I I like to be able to have people identify themselves. So other than that, Councilmember Moss, you have another comment?
I was just gonna say, I'm not opposed to uh maintaining the rules that we have for the public comment. I was looking at the fact that we had like a hundred people want to talk about the same issue.
Right.
They could explain it upfront, how we're gonna handle that, that would be understood.
And I think if we allow discretion of the chair, I think most people will read the crowd fairly well and you know, see how it plays out. We've never had in the twelve years that we've been on this together, Ms. Moss, you and I, I don't think we've ever had voluminous public comment uh, outside of maybe a public hearing, right? We've had usually an hour, two hours, that kind of thing.
Right. I think the biggest challenge we had was with the Chicago's area when we had to take down those uh, mobile homes. That was the longest, the biggest crowd that we had, so, yeah.
Very true. So what's the consensus of the group here? Do we want to allow some discretionary limits to public comment? If the room, for example, seems to be filled with a very large crowd, we want to have some discretion for the chair to be able to limit com- public comment to uh two minutes or one minutes?
Mr. Deputy Mayor, one other s- comment, uh, if I may. If we if we don't have some type of control over the public comment, we're gonna have to look at how we are keeping up with our programs that our city manager has worked toward making sure that we stay on topic and keep things moving forward, so just a thought.
No, very, very important. Mr. Branstad?
Yeah, I I I am not in favor of limiting the ability of everyone who is present to make public comment if they wish to do so. But provide flexibility to the chair to determine the length of time of public comment uh, uh however he sees appropriate, and particularly as long as he doesn't change the time partway through the session.
He or she, yes. Yeah, I would, I would agree with that. I I do as well. Ms. Farmer?
You saw me coming. Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Branstad about the flexibility of the chair, but I want to I I think that our our council rules of procedure are kind of a dusty document that sits on a, on a drive, computer drive somewhere, and it's our council script and and the things that are said every meeting that that bring it alive and everybody understands, okay, here's what the protocols are, and so what I worry about is that if we you know, six months from now, something comes up, let's say, well, we don't get a lot of folks coming in, well, what if we do someday? I want to make sure we're prepared, and so um, let's make sure that we, you know, we have some sort of, I don't know. Uh, just something that's that's in the script that says if we have a large crowd, you know, that public comment may, I don't know, I'm just
Yeah, no, it's a good point. So something in the script that might be a simple sentence that the due to the, you know, size of the and this is the problem where we don't have sign-in necessarily, right? But due to the size of the potential public comment, the chair has the right to limit uh the comments from three minutes to two minutes or one minutes.
Be clear, Mr. Deputy Mayor, there is a sign-in sheet. People are typically signing in. What we're dealing with when we have a hybrid meeting is there's a physical sign-in sheet for people who come in, and then the clerk can see who's in the waiting room virtually. And right now, because it's all virtual, that's, that's how we get it. It's not a sign-in sheet at all right now. What it is, is it's just the virtual wa- waiting room.
Ms. Farmer?
One, one last thing, I wanted, I I've been thinking a lot about the idea of preferred pronouns and and I appreciate the comments tonight about wanting to be able to to address uh, the folks that uh are choosing to speak to us, and it it's just not always clear-cut how people would like to be referred to, and so um, I'm just try, I'm not entirely sure how to um, how to build that protocol in, but I I want us to be uh sensitive to that.
Very good. Any other thoughts? Do you have enough direction, Ms. Walker and Mr. Caffield?
I do, um, with regard to the time, I am hearing consensus on wanting everyone who wishes to address the council to have some amount of time to address the council, regardless of how long that that makes a meeting. I am also hearing that when giving everyone three minutes would make a long time for the council to be trying to listen intently to each speaker, that there is going to be discretion for the mayor not to change at midstream, but to announce at the outset, everyone is getting one minute rather than three minutes. So that.
Yeah, I don't know that you should give a specific time. I think this, this. Yeah, I think everybody, I I bet you, if you looked at other rules of procedures, every place on the planet gives the chair the ability to l- limit how much the speakers could speak. They just, they just do. I I know people are upset by that, but everywhere. Yeah, that's, that's what I would say, that, so to hamstring and say, three minutes or two minutes, or three minutes, or a minute and a half, or three minutes, that that's at the discretion of the chair, so if the chair you, you have to assume some level of competency of the chair, right? I mean, you could get chairs, and there's probably You you have to assume some level of competency of the chair, right? I mean, you could get chairs and there's probably some in the legislature. Who are like, every gets thirty seconds, uh, you know. Just just because they can and they do that. And there's been folks like that, and I think we know some. But. We have to respect that. Anybody who's chairing our meetings is not gonna do that, right? Isn't gonna be that goofy and just. They're gonna be, they're gonna see the room. There's a hundred people talking. Let's give them two minutes each, right? That seems to make sense to me.
Right. And the consensus that I'm hearing, the only. Uh, tweak that I would add to what you just said is that I'm hearing council members say. The mayor would announce that at the outset and whatever time he's announcing as shortened time would apply to each. Not be something that would be decided, well, we're. An hour in, so now everybody else gets less time. It's it's gonna be consistent from the outset.
Right.
So that's what I'm hearing. And I think we can, we can do that and that you do want people to identify themselves. I don't think there's a lot of hurt from there. We'll make that happen.
Very good. Well, we appreciate the work on that. Mr. Coffield, that is all you have listed for uh. Portions of the agenda tonight under your report. Anything else?
I just have a few other quick updates, Deputy Mayor and Council. Uh, you might have heard that apparently here in Pierce County, the the phone systems. Were having some problems uh. Today, there was a uh, some kind of a damage or a cut fiber. Somewhere in Pierce County and it was not unique to Lakewood, but it also shut down South Sound nine one one. I do know that the. The telecom companies are working on it to try and to try and get it resolved. Um, also, uh, maybe some good news to report here. As as you know, um, our senior activity center, we know we have leased space from Pierce County over at the Lakewood Community Center. Um, that that space has been taken over by uh, Pierce County Superior Courts because of COVID. They don't have enough. Uh, for lack of a better term, elbow room at the city county business, city county buildings do their business. So they have um, yeah, been been using that space periodically for jury trials and things along those lines. We uh, we learned late last week that um, it looks like the Superior Court is not going to be needing. That space perhaps as early as January of two thousand twenty two, which is what we had been told. So it's good to know that. Um, the Superior Court is considering that. We should know something more finite in the next month or so. And um, our goal is twofold. One is that since our lease with Pierce County. For the Senior Activity Center, uh, which is a portion of that building expired at the end of two thousand twenty, we are going to need a new lease agreement. And then secondly, um, you know, we would like to get that squared away by the end of the year, early in January. So that we can um, begin to gear up and um, invite our seniors back into um, the facility and begin. Uh, in-person programs, hopefully in the early part of two thousand twenty two or so. So uh, so again, some some good news to 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 report there. Um, also, last week I had a chance to to meet with the Nisqually Tribes. CEO Peter and Sarah and him and I, we um, spoke about uh, an an agenda. For a joint meeting between this body and the tribal council, and they have offered. To host that meeting uh, down at their facility. And so um, they're checking on their end on some dates and times that would. That that would work. Um, Mr. and Sarah and I also uh, talked about a real, you know, straightforward agenda. Um, based on um, what what the mayor and I had heard when we had an opportunity to go and meet with the tribal council. About about a week and a half or two weeks ago. And um, you know, the first agenda item would just be the, you know, the renaming of Fort Stilliken Park and kind of the process that was just undertaken. Um, and so um, they they would like to to talk about that. And then um, we have identified a number of partnership projects, uh, specifically down at Fort Stilliken Park, our Parks and Recreation Director, Mary Dawsworth. So Mr. and Sarah and I talked about that because Ms. Dawsworth has been working with uh, tribal staff as well. And so um. Um, Ms. Dawsworth actually has a PowerPoint presentation and some boards uh, to visually illustrate some. Uh, some some projects and some improvements down there to recognize uh, uh, the the tribe as well as Chief Leshy. So that would be a second item. And then maybe something just to touch bases on which. We did a couple of years ago when we several years ago when we met with them was just the City of Lakewood's continued support and then Nisqually's support. Of the transportation and environmental issues associated. With I five crossing the Nisqually Delta. And um, that is something that, of course, this body um, wholeheartedly supports. And SSMCP has been taking the lead from a regional standpoint in 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 addressing. Um, so those are, those are kind of some of the, you know, the three topics that 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 we identified. So probably more to follow on that. Um, but again, it was a good discussion with um, Mr. Mr. Ann Sarah. Um, also, um, just as a uh, you know, courtesy heads up in advance of your meeting next week. One of the items on your agenda is to is to review the funding strategy. For future transportation improvements. This is a continuation of a discussion. That this body had has had several times going back about a year or so now. And um. So the last direction was for the council to bring us forward. You know, the the, you know, the the recommended projects. Based on the the financing that we have. And if you recall, uh, we previously had identified a list of of um. Of about eighteen projects valued at, um, I think it was about forty six million dollars or so. And so um, what we have been able to identify is funding totaling eighteen point three million. Um, the funding sources of that is really in four primary components. The smallest component is some stormwater funds totaling about one point eight million. Um, the second component is an accumulation of the vehicle license fees since about. End of nineteen, two thousand and two thousand one. Um, that that we have not, that the council has not allocated yet. And uh, that totals about one point seven million dollars. And then um, the third component is real estate excise tax that's been accumulating. Um, somewhat again, one-time monies for capital purposes. That totals about two point seven million dollars. And then the third component, the largest component is um, the recommendation that we um, bond or leverage amortize out. Um, the 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 remaining vehicle license fees over the next twenty years, which would generate about eleven point six million dollars. And. You've seen this before. So that results in eighteen point three million dollars and we've identified seven, seven projects. There is one commonality with the seven projects. The one commonality is that these are projects that will never get grant funds. So that's our, that's our recommendation. And when you look at, look at the projects on the map, and I don't want to spill, I don't want to spoil. Ms. Krause's um. Presentation next week, but you'll see how they will, they will fit in with future connectivity projects, particularly as it rates relates to. The remaining projects, which over time, we know in some shape, form or another, either soon. Or in the near future, we're going to get grant funds as well as three major projects or even more. That Sound Transit is gonna fund um, with their local access transit funds that we've been talking about. So um, just again, just wanted to give you a kind of a a preview of 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 that. And um, so um, again, um, the conversation will be around the the financing strategy. But the punchline is we've been identi- we've been able to identify eighteen point three million. And city monies, brand new money to be able to move on to the next phase of projects. And the timeline would be. You know, really beginning at twenty, you know, late twenty two, but really twenty three through twenty six. Um, also, um, we currently have our plate full, not just this year, but into twenty two and into twenty three as well. So it's not like we don't have any projects to work on. There's a lot happening out there. So, but um, again, just a preview. So um, with that, that's my report, Deputy Mayor.
Wow. Unbelievable. Nice and succinct, Mr. Coffield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we turn to council comments and I'm looking from the top of my little participant list. Mr. Boki.
I I don't have anything tonight. Thanks.
Councilmember Moss.
I'm good. Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor.
Councilmember Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. I attended the very first executive board meeting of the South Sound Housing Affordability Partnership. While you were sleeping. Something, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Biking your thirty five kilometers. Um, it was a great meeting and we took action to name Pierce County the administrative agency. For the partnership uh, for which they will receive a small administrative fee to do their administrating. Um, we also are in the process of hiring an executive director or manager. I'm not entirely sure what that um. Uh, what that title is called. Uh, hope to. Do um, some second interviews next week. Uh, so more to come on that. And there's been a request. Um, somewhat informal to keep the staff work group going. And it would be my recommendation that we wait until there is an executive director hired and a formal work plan put together. Uh, to determine what level of staff. Engagement might be needed from member organizations. I'm not entirely sure all member organizations would be. Able to delegate staff support at that level. And it's my understanding that this is a bit of a different um. Viewpoint than than from uh, the past two years as as the. As the partnership has been uh, put together.
Well, great.
Thank you.
Thanks for telling that. Do they typically want both the primary and the alternate at those meetings? Because I can do that. I just didn't know if they wanted both.
They they didn't. As a matter of fact, they had a, they had an alternate there and everybody was just so excited. Ooh, an alternate, you know, actually, actually came. Even when the primary came, so it's okay. You don't have to.
I have a lot of good guilt here from all these Catholic churches, so. All right, thank you. And then, uh, Mr. Branstad.
Same, Mr. Deputy Mayor. Um. Then I. I attended a meeting of the Tide Flats Advisory Committee, uh, that's been meeting. Concert with the the work on a. A subarea plan for the port uh, area to be able to go and do that. And they are. Reached the point of where they're really trying to uh. Work on uh, both the environmental impact uh, and planned action ordinance. And as the system works, they're considering three. Three options as they're going forward. One is a traditional no change option is to evaluate that. Uh, but the other is to consider an option that prioritizes environmental. Issues with the secondary consideration to employment issues. And then a third option that will prioritize employment issues. Uh, with environmental considerations. Uh, also being considered secondary. And the the only nuance to that was. They indicated that that the Coma City Council is looking to move from. Uh, interim regulations regarding that area to some permanent regulations. And they're considering that. Here in the very short term over before the end of the year. And that if whatever permanent, if they develop permanent regulations, then the permanent regulations would be considered. As an element of the no change. Option when it, when it was considered, whereas the other options would. Be open to further adjustment in the way I use regulations to do that. As as the city manager mentioned, there was a, there was a widespread uh, communications telephone outage. Uh, that impacted South Sound nine one one uh. And many others today. But South Sound nine one one has fully consolidated all of their call taking. Uh, into the new uh, Public Safety Communication Center building. Um, they've reached that and they're terminating their 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 lease with Pualup where all those folks have moved out. And the uh. The location on Thirty Fifth Street is uh. You know, and and now being uh. Remodeled as a backup facility uh. Should be needed in days such as today. Um, and then the last thing is I attended the Lake City Neighborhood uh. Association this past week. Um, and uh, they did have a a a question. Reflecting back to last summer and the. Incidents that took place in American Lake uh, North Park. And they were. Recalling that there was some discussion and comments about the city would might be looking at restricting. Uh, who could go to the park to residents are taking some. Measures to reduce uh, crowding at the park. And uh. We haven't really done anything with that uh, in that period of time and uh. Talked with the 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 city manager that that would be something for. If we want to still seriously consider that, it would have to be in the new year and something we would put on a work plan for the. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. Uh. Or not, no. I told them that you get some feedback on that. Um, the uh. They uh, they they remain uh. Interested in the progress of the uh. Roadwork on Gravely Lake Drive and then and then eventually on 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 Washington in their uh. Their interest sort of stems in terms of how are the detours going to change? And when are they all going to uh, to look away and uh. Will look to do that. And then uh, the last thing was uh, there were a number of people there at that meeting who were. Signators on the proposal that was sent to us during the ARPA funds update. Uh, about uh. The recommendation that the city initiates some sort of a program that involves the mobile homeless outreach. Uh. Uh, work uh, to be able to go and do that. And we did discuss it when we did that, but it hasn't been. And something that has come back to us. As we've then been just considering the. The options of where people. Made proposals during the outreach of where they were. Asking for money to do specific things and had a proposal. And uh, these folks are saying that they would still like us to. To take a look at it because they that there uh, was the one. Public outreach comment that came. From a group of people who weren't asking for the money for themselves, but were collectively asking for us. To do something. And so I would say that that interest is still there. They're still willing to work. Uh, in terms of. Designing something that maybe in an out year could come into fruition to be piloted to see if it uh. Moves the needle on homelessness in in any way. And I would tell them that I would mention it. To the councils so to. Keep the option. Alive in terms of consideration. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Bell.
I am good, Deputy Mayor. Thank you.
Did I hit everybody? Everybody good? Am I missing anyone? I have no other comments except to say uh, ciao and I'll see you next week.